Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Presbyterian of the James. My name is Dan Jordan anger and I serve as the moderator of the Presbyterian during 2022. Vice Moderator Rosalyn Banbury has kindly agreed to serve as the emergency moderator. In the unlikely event we lose connectivity here at Westminster Church. We are gathered together this evening for the delightful purpose of receiving a report and acting on recommendations of the Presbyterian Search Committee. Please note that we are recording this meeting using a tool of the Zoom meeting platform. If you missed the Zoom training that Jess conducted about 15 minutes ago and have a question about our process tonight, you can use the chat feature to send a message to Kelly Hope. During the meeting, if you would like to address the body, please raise your hand by using the raise hand icon located on the reactions button on your screen, or if you're participating by phone by using star nine. You will know that it's your turn to speak when you hear me say good evening and then your name. That will be your cue to unmute and address the body. All other hands will be lowered. Please state your name, church, or ministry, and then proceed. Please conclude your comments by stating, "Thank you, moderator." I don't need that personally, but it helps us signal. When you hear me say, "Thank you," and your name, that will be your cue that we are about to mute your microphone. If you're on the phone, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine and you mute and unmute yourself by pressing star six. Okay, let's get started. Mr. Stated Clerk, do we have a quorum this evening?
Moderator, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you. I declare that we have a quorum and I call this meeting of the Presbyterian to order. Please join me in prayer. Gracious and loving God, we come together before you in awe of your majesty, beauty, and power. We present ourselves to you as sinners whom you have washed in the blood of your son, Jesus Christ, and have knitted together into this body of believers, ready to witness and serve the risen Christ. Lord, we thank you for everyone gathered here this evening in person, by Zoom, and by phone. We ask that you send your Holy Spirit and inspire our hearts. Come fill our lives with your love, fill our conversations with your grace and truth. Fill this meeting with your presence, fill our deliberations with your wisdom. We ask this for your glory and praise. Amen. A few special welcomes before we get started. I want to welcome on behalf of the Presbyterian, all of our first time commissioners. If you are joining and participating in a Presbyterian meeting for the first time this evening, please identify yourself by using the you the raise your hand feature so that we we may recognize you. Already first time. Terry, welcome. See, one other person who's raised. Brenda, Peter. Kate. Ashley. Welcome to you all. Thank you for being here. We also welcome our corresponding members of the Presbyterian. Mr. Stated Clerk, are there ministers from other presbyteries registered for this meeting?
Moderator, we have Reverend Warren Lussain with us. He is the executive of the Senate of the Mid-Atlantic, a minister member of the Presbyterian of Charlotte, and serves as the liaison to the Presbyterian Search Committee. Moderator, I move that Reverend Lussain be granted privilege of the floor for this meeting.
Is there a second? Jess, thank you very much. If there is no objection, privilege of the floor is granted. Welcome, Warren. Let me also welcome any visitors who may be joining us tonight, in particular, family and friends of our candidate for lead Presbyterian for vision and collaboration. If I've missed anyone, please know that we are glad that you are with us. As Jess mentioned earlier, all voting will be by poll this evening. Once we are ready to vote, we will release a poll with a question, at which time you will see the question appear on your screen. Each poll will have three possible answers: yes, no, and I am not a voting commissioner. Once the poll appears on your screen, select your choice and hit submit. Once you hit submit, you will receive a confirmation that your vote has been submitted. If you are calling into the meeting, the voting procedure will be in two parts. Once the poll is launched, we will ask for those who would like to vote yes on the motion to do so by pressing star nine on your phone, which is the raise hand feature. Once those votes are tallied, Jess will lower all of the raised hands, and we will then call for those calling in by phone who would like to vote no on the motion to do so by pressing star nine. Once those votes are tallied, Jess will lower all of the raised hands. I now call on teaching elders Lauren Cogswell Ramsor and Ashley Diaz Mahias, co-pastors of Voices of Jubilee, to lead the Presbyterian worship. Good evening, Lauren and Ashley.
Good evening, friends. It's wonderful to be with you all tonight, and we're grateful to get this opportunity to worship with you all. My name is Ashley Diaz Mahias, and this is my co-pastor Lauren Ramsor, and we pastor the Voices of Jubilee. We accompany incarcerated youth across the state of Virginia and their families, and we are thrilled to get to share this time with you all. Let us join now together in a time of worship. Please join me for the in reading the opening sentences. Jesus Christ is the light of the world.
The light no darkness can overcome.
Stay with us, Lord, for it is evening
and the day is almost over.
Let your light scatter the darkness and illuminate your people.
The Lord be with you
and also with you.
Let us give thanks to the Lord, our God.
It is right.
It is right to give our thanks and praise. Will you pray with me now? We give you thanks and praise, O God of endless light, through our Lord Jesus Christ. In Christ, your light shines in our hearts and reveals the light that never fades. As daylight comes to an end and darkness begins to fall, we thank you for the light of day that shines through every little crack, bringing light and hope into systems of death. We bless you for the gift of this evening light, this gracious light that restores our soul. Pour out your spirit upon us that dreams and visions bring us ever closer to the beloved community of Jesus Christ, our risen Savior. Amen. Our scripture reading tonight comes from the book of Acts, chapter 11, verses 27 through 30. About that time, some prophets came down from Jerusalem to Antioch. One of them, Agabus, stood up and inspired by the Spirit, predicting that a severe famine would overtake the entire Roman world. This occurred during Claudius's rule. The disciples decided they would send support to the brothers and sisters in Judea, with everyone contributing to this ministry according to each person's abundance. They sent Barnabas and Saul to take this gift to the elders. The word of the Lord. Thanks be to God. Our response in faith will conclude with a song. This song is particularly special to us as pastors. It is one that we have sung as a choir on the inside of a youth facility, and it's led by our choir director, Makita McCreary. It's called "Who Has the Final Say?" And we sing it tonight to remind ourselves and one another that God has the final say over life, over death, and over all things.
For we sponsor song. So this is Jessica Fox. This is Toya Fox. This is Erin Rose. And we are all a part of a group called Urban Doxology and part of East End Fellowship where this song comes from, is birthed from. And we it's near and dear to our hearts. So it just says that Jehovah has the final say. And it's a call and response. So Erin here is going to be singing the lead. And you know, once you hear what she sings, then you sing. And you know, we don't have drums with us, so clap along, okay? Keep the beat in the comfort of your homes or wherever you're watching from. So let's sing. Here we go.
Who has the final say?
Jehovah has the final say.
Who has the final say?
Jehovah has the final say.
Ain't no matter what the doctor says.
Jehovah has the final say.
No matter what the lawyer says.
Jehovah has the final say.
I have no reason to fear. I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light. The Lord is my light. Everybody sing it now.
I have no reason to fear.
Sing, "I have."
I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light. The Lord is my light.
Oh, tell me, who has the final say?
Jehovah has the final say.
I want to know who has the final say.
Jehovah has the final say.
And no matter what my pocket say.
Jehovah has the final say.
No matter what the world may say.
Jehovah has the final say. I have no reason to fear.
Sing, "I have."
I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light. The Lord is my light.
Sing, "I have no reason to fear."
I have no reason to fear.
Sing, "I have."
I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light. The Lord is my light.
Oh, tell me, who has the final say?
Jehovah has the final say.
I want to know who has the final say.
Jehovah has the final say.
Ain't no matter what the world may say.
Jehovah has the final say.
I said, "No matter what this world may say."
Jehovah has the final say.
"I have."
I have no reason to fear.
Sing, "I have."
I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light.
The Lord is my light.
The Lord is my light.
One more time, sing, "I have no reason to fear."
I have no reason to fear.
"I have."
I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light. The Lord is my light.
I'm not worried about a thing 'cause I know you are guiding me. Where you lead me, Lord, I will go. I have no fear 'cause I know who's in control.
There's no limit to what you can do. It all belongs to you. It all belongs to you.
You're almighty.
You're almighty and all-powerful. It all belongs to you. It all belongs to you.
Said, "There's no limit."
There's no limit to what you can do. It all belongs to you. It all belongs to you.
We're almighty.
You're almighty and all-powerful. It all belongs to you. It all belongs to you.
When Jesus say yes, nobody can say no.
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 "I have."
I have no reason to fear.
"I have no reason to fear."
I have no reason to fear.
"I have no reason."
I have no reason to fear.
"I won't be afraid."
I have no reason to fear.
"I won't be afraid."
I have no reason to fear.
"I won't be afraid."
I have no reason to fear.
"I won't be afraid."
I have no reason to fear.
"Put that one with me."
I have no reason to fear.
"Put that one with me."
I have no reason to fear.
"I want my faith in my fight."
I have no reason to fear.
"I want my faith in my fight."
I have no reason to fear.
"I won't be afraid."
I have no reason to fear. The Lord is my light. The Lord is my light.
Hallelujah.
That is awesome.
Amen. Amen. Now, friends, we are not afraid. And so without fear and with all trust in our living and loving and gracious God, let us join together in prayer. Let us pray. We give you our praise and thanks, O God, for all the gifts of love we have received from you and for your persistent mercy in Jesus Christ. Especially, we thank you for the faithful witness of people of faith and love. We thank you for the resilience that we see in parents and teachers and our children, for the curiosity and openness that we see in children, for all works of compassion, grace, and justice. We pray, loving and gracious God, that you would interrupt the cycles of violence that plague our country. We pray for your healing presence to be with the community of the Geneva Presbyterian Church and the community in Buffalo, New York, and our own communities who know too much of violence. Guide our feet, our actions, our leaders into your paths of healing, truth-telling, justice-building, and peace. We especially pray for those who struggle with doubt and despair, people afflicted with disease, and those who are in jail or prison. We pray for your peace in all nations and the raising up of peace builders. God, full of grace and life, you bring together what is scattered and you mend what is broken. Unite us this night with the scattered peoples of the earth that we may be one family of your children. Bind up our wounds and heal us in spirit that we may be renewed as disciples of Jesus Christ, our Savior. And friends, we invite you to join us as we pray the prayer that Jesus Christ taught us to pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever. Amen. Friends, may the Lord, who is our peace, give us peace at all times and in every way. Amen. Bless the Lord. The Lord's name be praised.
Thank you so much, Ashley and Lauren. When Jesus say yes, nobody say no. So let's look for what Jesus is telling us, yes, and follow him. I now recognize Teaching Elder Janet James, Vice Moderator of the Mission Council for the Adoption of the Agenda. Good evening, Janet.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, I bring forward from the Mission Council the agenda for its adoption.
Thank you, Janet. The agenda may be found on page three of the packet for this evening. As the motion is made by a committee, no second is required. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's please vote now. A poll will appear momentarily. Poll is posted. Please respond by clicking there, yes, no, or I'm not a voting commissioner. If you're participating by phone and would like to vote yes, please do so by raising star or pressing star nine on your phone. Okay, now, if any commissioner on the phone would like to vote no on the motion before us, please press star nine at this time. Okay, I see that there are 120 votes, yes, zero no votes, and nine honest participants who are not voting commissioners. So the agenda is approved. Thank you. Janet, anything else from the Mission Council this evening?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. I now call upon certified Christian educator Barbara Flint, co-moderator of the Presbyterian Search Committee. Good evening, Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On behalf of the Presbyterian Search Committee, I would like to briefly tell you how we came to put this candidate into nomination. The seven members of your search committee were elected at the June 2021 Presbyterian meeting. Since July, we have been meeting mostly via Zoom every other Friday. Jess Cook and I have been the co-chairs, and serving with us are Beverly Bullock, Peggy Fox, Ken Henry, Noah Morgan, and Jen Rowe. Using the strategic plan and the mission statement, we created three distinct job descriptions, which were sent to the Mission Council for approval and then to Louisville and were uploaded to the Church Leadership Connection. We began receiving PIFs from the CLC as well as staff referrals for all three Presbyterian positions. However, we concentrated on the lead Presbyterian for vision and collaboration first with a February 1 deadline to receive PIFs. For the lead Presbyterian position, we received 36 PIFs, and of those, 21 were males and 15 were females. Each, and I want to stress, each of the seven members of your search committee read all 36 PIFs. Some had cover letters, PowerPoints, or links to also look at. We had a ranking system, and 10 candidates were invited to interview. Of those 10, we had an interview, we called it a conversation, with five via Zoom on Friday, February 25. The candidate that we are presenting tonight quickly rose to the top of the list. This person flew into Richmond on Thursday, April 7th for a second round of conversation. They met with all seven members of the search committee as well as most members of the current Presbyterian staff the following day. On Saturday, April 9th, we met at Camp Hanover. And while Doug Walters gave the candidate a tour of the facilities, the search committee overwhelmingly felt the spirit calling this person to be our new lead Presbyterian. The offer was made to the candidate that afternoon at Camp Hanover and was received by the candidate with a resounding yes, 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 at which point all eight of us rose from our seats to give thanks to God. So without further ado, it gives me great joy to move that the Presbyterian of the James call the Reverend Dr. Floretta Barbie Watkins as lead Presbyterian for vision and collaboration. At the turn and the terms of the call be as follows: Cash salary, $52,500; housing allowance, $52,500; Self-Employment Contribution Act, $8,033; Board of Pensions, Medical Pension Death and Disability, $38,850; Vision and Dental, $492; Professional Expenses, $2,500; Continuing Education Expenses, $2,500; Monthly Coaching Sessions Paid by the Presbyterian; Auto reimbursement at the IRS rate; Purchase or Lease of a Presbyterian Vehicle is anticipated; Four Weeks Annual Leave; Two Weeks Study Leave; Thirty Days of Renewal After Every Three Years, Over and Above Vacation and Study Leave; Three Months Sabbatical Every Six Years; Moving and Relocation Expenses Up to $25,000; Up to Two Months of Housing While Looking for a Home. Mr. Moderator, this is my motion.
Thank you, Barbara. As this motion comes from a committee, no second is required. Before opening the floor for questions, members of the search committee are invited to speak to the motion. Jess.
Thank you, moderator. And thank you, Barbara, for your beautiful description of the process. As you mentioned, we've been meeting every other week. And I just wanted to offer, as the co-chair of this committee, that I felt like at this point in my life, I'd had a lot of experiences where this the Holy Spirit kind of showed up. And the reference we continue to offer as we reflect on our time together over the last year and in this hiring process is that is that we are recognizing the Holy Spirit moving in ways we haven't before. For my echo of what Barbara said, just that I feel the committee as a whole, when we were able to meet in person in April, it was such a warm and delightful embrace. And and as we found in our conversations with Flo, you know, she she manages to to literally wow people. That was Barbara's word after we hung up the conversation from from the first interview conversation we had with Flo was Barbara said, "I just have one word," and that's wow. And and so I just wanted to offer that that for me, you know, the last the last couple of years have been such a such a such a hard time. such a hard time for so many of us, and it's such a hard time, I think, for all of us. And it's just been so refreshing to have conversations with candidates and to have conversation with Flo, who is so full of vision, that this time feels like fertile soil. And I just wanted to offer that I'm so excited for folks to get to know her, that it has just been just an awe-inspiring experience thus far. So I just wanted to offer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Are there other members of the search committee who would like to address the body? Seeing none, I will open the floor to questions and discussion. Please use the raised hand feature. Reverend Tim Goodlow. Please unmute yourself.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I saw on the personal information form that the candidate has been in Detroit for two years, but also has served as pastor of her church in Charlotte, North Carolina from 2002 to the present and is on the Committee on Ministry there from 2015 to the present. Has she been commuting from Detroit? And if so, does she plan to continue to do so from here?
I'll ask Barbara Flint to respond to that question. Thank you, Janet.
Flo has been the interim Presbyterian in Detroit. She does have an apartment there, but she also has a residency in Charlotte. She is planning to move here to Richmond, permanent location.
So again, has she been commuting to Detroit? Has she continued to serve as a pastor of her church in Charlotte? Will she continue to do that from here?
She will not be serving as a pastor in Charlotte. She will be here as executive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
If I may offer, I realize when, I'm going to add a spotlight. So when we first got connected with Flo, just for context, she had not been looking for another call. So I was connected, she was connected to us through the Reverend Jan Edmiston, who is currently the Presbyterian in Charlotte Presbyterian, the executive Presbyterian down there. And Jan had connected to me because she had seen Flo at a mid-council retreat, leader's retreat. And Flo had not been looking for a call, I think, had been open to the Spirit, knowing that she was in an interim position. The congregation that she'd been leading in Charlotte, I think, had run its course in terms of the life of the ministry, which I would let Flo kind of share more around. That was part of her story and her PIF as well, I believe. But, you know, I think when she first got connected to us, she had sort of shared, that's part of why we hadn't shared her name until this evening, because we wanted to wait and just to respect the process here and there. So it could possibly be that with regard to the committee memberships, that as she submitted her PIF, there were things that were submitted because her PIF was there and sort of moved through the system in a way that like she hadn't quite anticipated applying for this position. So I think the Spirit has been moving and really kind of lifted it up. But I think it's, we can definitely, you know, in the midst of all of the things, assure you that she is very excited about being here and has every intention of being fully here and fully present here in her ministry in the Presbyterian, which I think we could all agree is just plenty.
Thank you, Jess. Are there other questions or discussion? Reverend Kara English, may I mute yourself, Kara?
Could you just tell us a little bit more about the process? I know the process for pastors in terms of meeting with the Committee on Ministry. Are there other teams that she's met with? Or what are the next steps in our process? So I have a little bit better understanding of what's next.
Certainly. She has met with the Committee on Examinations of the Presbyterian via Zoom and passed that. Then the Committee on Examinations went to the Commission on Ministry, taking her name and all of her information. And the Committee on Ministry approved her, Commission on Ministry approved her name to come to this Presbyterian meeting this evening. So this is the last step of a vote from the Presbyterian for Flo to be with us.
Other questions or discussion? Any other comments from the committee before I declare that we are ready to vote? Jen Rowe. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening, Moderator. Thank you. I didn't raise my hand fast enough earlier. I just wanted to say, this is an hallelujah moment. After having served as the moderator of the Strategic Planning Team, I could not be more excited and ready to introduce the Presbyterian of the James to Reverend Dr. Flo. As I hope you have read in her information, she, her life's journey has uniquely equipped her to step into the role of Lead Presbyterian for Vision and Collaboration. I almost feel as though she was somehow listening in on our Strategic Planning Team meetings. Just in our conversations with her, she is a visionary. She is well-equipped as an exceptional leader and a listener. And her abiding love for the Church is abundantly clear. So I thank God for bringing the Reverend Dr. Flo to the Presbyterian of the James in this place and time, and I am so excited to see what comes next. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I think we are ready to vote, and I declare that the body is ready to vote. The motion before us, and let me summarize that for you, is that the Presbyterian of the James call the Reverend Dr. Floretta Barbie Watkins as Lead Presbyterian for Vision and Collaboration, and that the terms of call be as presented by Barbara Flint. And a poll for the motion should appear, and it is up. So please respond by clicking either yes, no, or I'm not a voting commissioner. Once you vote, remember to hit submit. If you're voting by phone and would like to vote yes, please do so now by pressing star nine on your phone. Okay, and thank you. If anyone would like to vote no by phone, please press star nine at this time. Thank you all. The tally, as I see it now, is 124 votes yes. I'm sorry, 124 votes by Zoom, yes, two votes by phone, yes, two votes no, and eight not a voting commissioner. So the motion carries. Thank you all, and praise God for bringing this Presbyterian and Dr. Flo together to serve God's kingdom in this time. Barbara, do you have anything further from the Presbyterian Search Committee?
I do. I would like to offer a second motion that the effective date of the call to the Reverend Dr. Floretta Barbie Watkins be June 27, 2022. That is my motion, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Barbara. No second is needed. Are there any comments or questions from the body? Okay, seeing none, I declare that we are ready to vote. The motion is that the effective date of Dr. Barbie Watkins' call would be June 27. If you're voting by Zoom, please press yes, no, or I'm not a voting commissioner. If you're voting by phone, please do so by pressing star nine if you wish to vote yes. Thank you. If you're voting by phone and wish to vote no, please press star nine now. See, 126 votes yes, zero votes no, and 10 non-commissioners. The motion carries. Thank you all. My understanding is that Dr. Barbie Watkins has been has been in Zoom purgatory, and we can now welcome her. So I would invite the search committee to introduce the Reverend Dr. Floretta Barbie Watkins to the Presbyterian.
It gives me great pleasure, Mr. Moderator, to introduce to the Presbyterian of the James the Reverend Dr. Floretta Barbie Watkins.
Hello, everyone.
Good day. Dr. Flo, would you like to address the body?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Greetings in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I am humbled and awed by the work and presence of the Holy Spirit upon the Presbyterian of the James. During my visit to Richmond, I had the opportunity to pray, sit, ask and answer questions, and really get to know Reverend Jess Cook and Certified Christian Educator Barbara Flint, and Reverend Ken Henry, and Commissioned Pastor Peggy Fox, and Reverend Bev Bullock, and Christian Educator Jen Rowe, and candidate Noah Morgan. I experienced firsthand the thoughts, prayers, and intentionality of the process to create a synergistic team of leaders for the Presbyterian of the James. I have never felt so welcomed. As your new Lead Presbyterian for Vision and Collaboration, I have but one primary goal: to lead with love first. I'm more than excited about what God has done, is doing, and is about to do in and through the Presbyterian of the James. I'm more than excited about the new mission and vision and calling of the Presbyterian of the James. The courage and wisdom to call not one but three Presbyters is a clear sign that it takes all of us to do the work of ministry. If I could, I would like to introduce my family to you, or is this the appropriate time for that?
Absolutely. Thank you for doing that.
I would like to introduce my incredible wife, Montressa Barbie Watkins, our daughter Erin Barbie, and I'm not sure if her wife is with her, Leah Graham, and most importantly, our first grandson, who is still cooking in the oven, but his debut is in August. Finally, over the next year, here is my game plan for the road ahead. And I use a quote from J. Gordon Kingsley: "To learn the song of the tribe, the Presbyterian of the James, in order to sing the song of the Presbyterian of the James, so that others can find their place in the song, and then together write the next verse." Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Dr. Flo. And welcome to you and to your family. We are so excited, looking forward to meeting you all and welcoming you here in Virginia.
Thank you.
We thank God for you and look forward to our service of our Lord together. And all, please join me in prayer. God of Justice and God of Mercy, we rejoice that you have called the Reverend Dr. Floretta Barbie Watkins and her family to service with this Presbyterian. And we rejoice that she has responded to your call. We have confidence, God, that you are doing a new thing in this Presbyterian. And we pray for the Holy Spirit to endow us with discernment, energy, joy, and love so that we may follow your Son and glorify you. All of this, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Before I close the meeting, let me extend deep gratitude to the members of the Presbyterian Search Committee. You all are doing an awesome job. We know that you are continuing to do an awesome job and have a lot of work left to do, and we are grateful that that you seem to be enjoying the work that we have reached an incredible milestone this evening. We are all excited to be, for the opportunity to work with Dr. Flo. And we look forward to seeing members of the search committee that you reach the culmination of your service later this year with bringing two more Presbyters to us. Thank you all. The 111th Stated Meeting of the Presbyterian of the James is right around the corner, scheduled to take place four weeks from today, Tuesday, June 14, starting at 9:00 AM Eastern Daylight Time. The Mission Council has decided that we will conduct the meeting in a hybrid format with some of us participating in person here at Westminster Church in Richmond and some of us participating by Zoom. The packet for the meeting will be available by May 31. Please start making plans to attend. And you pastors, please start recruiting your elders to join that meeting. I want to thank the Reverend Joel Morgan and the members and staff of Westminster for hosting some of us for tonight's meeting. Having completed our agreed-upon business, I declare that this special meeting of the Presbyterian of the James is adjourned, and I ask you to join me in one hour. Loving God, thank you for the privilege of being your church. Thank you for placing into this body every person who has been with us this evening. For we could not do the work you have assigned to this Presbyterian without each one. As we part from one another, help us to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with you, our God. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. See you in four weeks.